Item 7B, receive presentation on history and status of the city's cable enterprise.
Sorry. Yes, please go ahead, Director.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. My name is Sandeep Krishnamurthy and I am the Director of San Bruno Municipal Cable. I am going to make the presentation tonight on the history of the cable enterprise, our current status, and our plan for a path forward. I have with me my colleagues, Mr. Bob Acheson, who is the Business Manager of the cable enterprise, and a project consultant from an engineering capacity, Mr. Al Johnson. This presentation will provide you with information on the cable industry, our part in it, the improvements we have underway.
Mayor Medina, can we take about a five-minute recess?
Yeah, of course. Let's take a five-minute break, okay, and then we'll reconvene. Thank you, City Clerk. All right, we're going to come out of our recess and go back to our item that's on the agenda, which is the presentation on history and status of the San Bruno City's cable enterprise.
Thank you. The objectives of this presentation will be to provide information on the cable industry, our part in it, the improvements we have underway, the crossroads we face, and finally, our plan for a path forward. We plan to accomplish this in three parts. In the first part, we have the evolution of the cable industry itself. In Part Two, we have San Bruno Cable's current situation. And in Part Three, the path forward. We shall begin Part One with a short video, which is titled "A Brief History of Cable: Creating and Cutting the Cord."
Two hundred channels and nothing to watch? That wasn't always a problem in America because we didn't always have two hundred channels. Everything changed when cable was born. Back in the 1940s, broadcast television was transforming the country. TV signal was transmitted from local towers to rabbit-eared antenna. But reception was a hit or miss. Not everyone could get a signal. So, a few enterprising Americans found a workaround. One of them being John Walson, a TV salesman in rural Pennsylvania. Walson put an antenna on a hilltop and ran a wire down to his TV store. The idea of cable was born. By 1952, these community antennas serviced 14,000 cable subscribers in 70 different places nationwide. And unlike local broadcasters, antenna operators could pick up signals from far away, allowing cable customers to access new content. In 1972, Charles Dolan launched Home Box Office, or HBO. Four years later, in 1976, Ted Turner founded what would become TBS, and later created CNN. The cable industry gave rise to new titans, who took advantage of satellite technology to reach larger audiences. By the 1990s, cable took off, and there were millions of subscribers to dozens of cable companies across the country. Cable reached millions of American households for decades. And then the Internet arrived. First, it was just dial-up, like your old AOL free trial CDs. You remember those. Service traveled over old copper phone lines owned by phone companies. Cable providers quickly realized that the fat wires they built to transmit hundreds of TV channels could also be used to provide Internet service. So, they started selling high-speed Internet with their cable bundles. Suddenly, illegally downloading that Red Hot Chili Peppers album on Napster got a whole lot faster. But stringing every household in America with cable wire is expensive. Cable companies effectively divided up the country rather than compete directly against each other. Content providers then created more and more channels. Cable operators paid to carry them and passed on fees to consumers. Media companies like Disney and Viacom relied on money from cable bundles for decades. Meanwhile, cable companies are relying on selling Internet service and looking to also expand into the cellphone industry. So, how these companies, regulators, and consumers navigate this new world of options will determine the future of cable. Stay tuned.
That brings us to the end of the video. Okay. Cable has evolved over the years with these broad phases. From the '70s through about 2010, we had the evolution of community antenna TV to cable itself, which led to more channels, more packages, which equaled more customers, and of course, higher costs. In the early 2000s, we had the launch of cable internet. It became a nice, new line of business for the cable industry. From 2014 onwards, we've had the introduction of internet video. So, we had internet video offerings such as Netflix and others taking center stage. In 2018, this year, cable has finally started adopting smaller packages of TV channels. They called them skinny bundles. And, in many cases, cable offerings also include internet video. What we expect to see from 2019 onwards is competition from, and some kind of collaboration with 5G, as well as the introduction of the Internet of Things on cable systems, and fiber-based gigabyte internet service, as well as IP video becoming a standard. Just to review how the cable industry serves customers, earns and invests money. The traditional revenue sources for cable have included subscriptions to residents in their footprint, business services to the businesses that they can serve, advertising spots that they place on the channels where they have the ability to do so, leased access channels where they can lease channels to third-party providers, equipment rentals which include leases on set-top boxes and other pieces of equipment in the home, and finally, through paid service calls. The expenses include building and maintaining a plant, which includes the cable that goes throughout cable company's footprint, the customer premise equipment that has to be bought upfront and then leased to customers, the license fees paid to programmers, from whom the channels are licensed and then beamed out to subscribers' homes, the head-end equipment and licenses to pull down these channels and push them through the cable to customers' homes, then all the marketing-associated activities that go with providing a competitive service to subscribers, finally, the salaries, general and administrative expenses that are inherent to any business, and followed by franchise and government fees that are due from the cable system to the local regulatory authority. Also, to review how internet speed itself works, what we have here is an example of a typical family that's streaming, emailing, loading up selfies, looking for recipes of the internet. And what we have on the right side of the slide are different members of that typical family doing various things. You have Suzie, who's gaming, playing an online game with three or four friends. At the same time, while Mom is trying to stream a movie, and the movie is buffering because Suzie is using up the internet speed that's available to the home. And at the same time, the son of the family, Jimmy, he's on the computer. He's searching for a research paper. And again, his loading of the website is slow because the bandwidth's being used up by the previous two people mentioned. And then you have Joey, who might be in his room trying to upload selfies, who's again having issues with the upload because of the lack of internet bandwidth. And finally, Dad, who in this scenario is trying to prepare dinner. And he can easily find recipes of the internet because of the lack of bandwidth. So what it goes to show is that the more people you have in the home trying to use the internet, the lesser the amount of bandwidth available for each of those users, which points straight away to the need for greater bandwidth and therefore, greater internet speeds. What we have here is how internet TV penetration has increased over the years. And this slide focuses on the years 2013 through 2018, the first quarter of this year. And we see a steady rise in the percentage of subscriptions amongst US broadband homes who subscribe to an internet TV service. And this could include anything from a Netflix to Hulu to PlayStation Vue service and so on. And it starts at about 40%, about 45% in 2013, and climbs all the way to the current 62, 63%. It just goes to show that a large number of US homes have access to these services. On the next slide, we see how many of these broadband homes have pay-TV services, and we see a steady decline. In the previous slide, you saw a rise, and here you see a decline, where the numbers were at 84% or close to 85% in 2015. And by the third quarter of 2017, they've gone down by about a 10 percentage point drop. So, just to summarize, we see a rise in the number of homes that have broadband and subscribe to some form of an internet television service. And we see a decline, at the same time, in the number of homes that have access to traditional pay-tellevision services. What has happened to pay-TV itself, of which cable has been the largest provider over the years? In 1995, cable had a 93% market share. In 2006, that had dropped to 69%, and 2017, we had 54%. So what this has all resulted in, the expansion of the internet, the decline of pay-tellevision, the emergence of so many different players, has been more television choices than ever before for the average US home. And with the result that by the end of 2017, we had 55% of US homes who were streaming some form of television over the internet, with 42% having some form of cable subscription, 26% on satellite, and just 9% on telecom. As of 2018, cable's customer base, and this is a set of statistics sourced from the National Cable Television Association, about 66 million homes have cable broadband. About 52 million have television, and about 31 million have the phone through their cable company. How do we at San Bruno Cable stack up against these national statistics? Where broadband penetration nationally is 53%, we have 44. Where national cable TV penetration is 41, we have 38. And where national phone penetration, as provided by cable companies, is 25%, we have 6. What has happened in the broader industry over the past 10 years or so is the emergence of a large number of really powerful applications, which are delivered over the internet and have very big players behind them. We see here the emergence of Netflix, streaming in 2012, the launch of Sling in 2015, MLB TV emerging into its own in 2017. And in 2018, we have ESPN announcing the launch of ESPN+. And these are big, big players who are advancing their interests for IP-based delivery of their services. The net result of all this is that TV itself is becoming all apps. The video marketplace is stronger than ever. It's not like people are watching less. It's just that they're consuming in a different direction. The home has become an always-connected setup, where it's 24 by 7, and a lot of usage is emerging from that always-connected home. TV has become truly everywhere. It's mobile, available on any device, wherever people want it and however they want to access content. The media device itself, what used to be the set-top box in the home, has started merging into the smartphone that you carry in your pocket, and vice versa. There are certain elements of the smartphone that have started coming onto set-top boxes. Pay-TV apps are available on all devices, and they're available through Apple, Android, Amazon, and the like. TV itself has been getting a lot smarter. By the end of 2017, 82 million Americans were watching some form of television on their smart TVs. With this, we're going to go to a short video, sort of highlights what's happening at the highest level of the media industry. Bob, I can see that Netflix...
Yes, I'm not sure it's going to run there. Give me one second, please.
Okay.
I do apologize. Well, let's try.
For decades, cable and satellite TV networks have taken in money for both subscribers and advertisers, a dual revenue stream. Netflix upended the model by offering ad-free content for radically lower prices. And Hastings' new media companies wouldn't adjust quickly because they'd want to protect their old profitable model. That's why you're seeing Fox and Time Warner selling, and Comcast and Disney buying. The bigger these companies can get, the longer they can survive. There's still a sense of skepticism among some that Netflix is overvalued and may not be able to live up to the expectations the market has placed on it. After all, Netflix only earned about $1 billion in EBITDA last year. CBS, a company almost eight times smaller than Netflix, earned three times that. But Netflix is competing against traditional media companies with a different set of rules. It's an ominous sign for big media, which realizes it has to transform now to survive.
To summarize, if that's the story of big media, we are definitely at the opposite end of the spectrum in San Bruno Cable. And we have to change as well, to accommodate ourselves to changing customer preferences, as well as to the changing modes through which customers access their content. And the internet seems to be the primary vehicle that they're using increasingly to access their content. So, the summary of this section is that the cable industry in the US is changing in a very big way, and has been for the past 10 years in some form or fashion. And the change is kind of accelerating at this point. And the internet has changed TV entertainment choices for people across the board. And this has put media companies, the traditional players in the TV channel space, into some kind of a crossroads where they have to choose whether they go further into providing content on the internet or through a traditional mode of distribution. In the next section, we will tell you about San Bruno Cable, the improvements we have underway, and our own crossroads. We're going to start this again with a video, which was shot by the American Cable Association and features Bob.
My name is Bob Acheson. I'm the Business Manager at San Bruno Municipal Cable in San Bruno, California. I'm a longtime cable veteran, 30 years plus in the business. Well, San Bruno is a city of about 43,000 people. We're a municipal system, so we work closely with the city council. It's a wonderful little city. It's headquarters for YouTube Corporation, so there's a large Google presence here. Walmart.com has a large presence in this city, which is pretty good for a city of 43,000 people. Issues that we face, major issues that we face, is the cost of retransmission consent. I mean, some of those fees are going up 2, 3, 400%. And those are fees that we have to pass on to our consumers. And that's always an issue. I mean, we try to keep our costs contained. So now, we're offering the basics. So we have 200-plus channels of television. We're offering internet-based telephone, telephony services, and obviously, internet services. We now have about 2,000 customers on fiber to the home in three different apartment and condo complexes through the city. You've been up to the head end. And of course, that was not only our head end in the beginning days, but that was our office as well. You saw how small those structures are. Doing fiber, we went fiber relatively deep into the network here some 15 or so years ago. So we've always had a fiber loop and a redundancy of fiber service. We connected all the city buildings, all the city structures, the city pump stations, anything that has to do with the city. We connected all of the public schools that are within the city limits. We did all of those sorts of things, the library. All of that was connected with fiber many, many years ago. With YouTube, for instance, or Google Corporation, they need fiber access to the internet, to the rest of the world. And one of the things that we were able to do, based on where we're located and the infrastructure we've already created, is that we're able to provide a 96-count dark fiber to them for their own access and their own private use. So, that's a, you know, that's an income stream for us. And it's certainly a service to one of the major employers in our city. You wouldn't believe the sense of community this place has. They do what they call a posy parade, which is a children's parade down the main street. And they've been doing it for 71 years or so. Back in the early, early days of cable technology, decided that they wanted to have their own cable TV system. So they began work on developing a cable system here in 1969. Opened up the doors in 1971. We have customers from 1974 that have been continuously with us. And we've been providing service, you know, ever since then.
That brings us to the end of the video. This video was shot by the American Cable Association a few months ago. It's an umbrella body that represents the interests of smaller cable operators in Washington DC. With that, we come to the slide which lists the build-out of San Bruno Cable's infrastructure over the past 47 years. Starting from 1971, when Mr. Dave Thomas was present at the system, the bill charts every CapEx incurred, with the permission of the city council, through to 2018, when the router upgrade was accepted a few months ago. It covers a total of 18.065 million and covers a span, as I said, of 47 years. It has included expansion of the channel from the 12-channel system that was initially available through to its current status, where it provides over 300-plus channels on HD and SD, as well as enhanced internet capacity made possible by the router upgrade that's currently underway. Where San Bruno Cable started and where it is now is sort of highlighted by this chart. It started as a CA TV system, which was basically simplified setup to pull down TV channels and pipe them through to subscribers' homes. And in between, during the process of CapEx improvements, ring and bus architecture was adopted, where a master head-end was developed, and then a system of nodes and tabs were created throughout the city of San Bruno to pipe channels and subsequently, the internet through to subscribers. In terms of data, the system is a 750-megahertz system, which is capable of pushing out the 300-plus channels we currently carry. It currently serves about 46% of the homes in San Bruno and has 85 miles of cable on the ground. We own and operate only one of the 300-plus channels that we offer. And that is Channel 1, which is our PEC channel, which is a public, educational, and governmental channel. What you see in the picture there is a node. And this is a piece of equipment that's pretty critical to our current infrastructure. It should be noted at this point that this node has some form of electrical supply going through it and is subject to the fluctuations in the electrical system. In terms of performance, how has the system performed over the years? I'm focused on the period 2010 to 2018 because that's the time when the system went all digital. And in 2010, the national TV, cable TV penetration was at 55%. We were at 44. In 2018, the national cable TV penetration has fallen to 41%, and we are at 38. In terms of broadband, nationally, there was a 39% penetration by cable TV systems. And we were at 35 in 2010. And it has since climbed nationally to 53%, and we have since gone up to 44 in 2018. So we have tracked national trends. In terms of the infrastructure spent nationally as opposed to San Bruno Cable over the years, over the last 20 years, the National Cable Television Association says that $275 billion was spent nationally on developing cable infrastructure. And this helped to realize $1.8 trillion in revenue. So which translates to, for every dollar spent on national cable infrastructure, $6.55 was made in terms of revenue. If we translate that to San Bruno, where we come out at is, we spent $18 million. We generated $139 million in revenue, which translates to $7.69 per dollar spent. To encapsulate the statistics about the system, we have this slide which has us at 100% of homes passed in San Bruno with our cable plant. Our head-end is 20 years old. Our HFC hybrid coax fiber cable plant is 20 years old. We operate a system called DOCSIS 3.1, which is a software protocol on which we have our channels and internet ride. And that's aged by about five to six years. The latest in the market is about, is a version 3.1. We launched our ISP business in 2002, and we offer 396 television channels. The internet speeds we offer start at 5 Mbps. And in 17% of the area covered by fiber currently in San Bruno Cable, we offer up to 1 gigabyte per second. Our current financial situation. On a monthly basis, we generate about $110 per subscriber. On a monthly basis, we generate about a hundred and ten dollars per subscriber, but we end up spending about a hundred and thirteen with a net margin of a negative three-point-seven percent. We have a budget of about ten-point-nine-two-six million for the year and an expense level of eleven-point-zero-five-six. So we're going to be a little on the negative side on paper at this point in time. Our cable fund itself, within the general fund of the city, is at a negative fourteen million. What we have as a goal going forward, which I will articulate in slides yet to come, in terms of a plan and activities that we currently have underway, our goal is to have an average revenue per user of ninety-five dollars, which is a little lower than the hundred and ten we currently have. We have a margin goal of ten percent. And we want to look at increasing our subscriber base by about three thousand. One of the issues about San Bruno Cable that we have come across is the number of complaints received. And we have tracked these complaints over the last three years. We start off in two thousand and seventeen at about five hundred complaints a month, which trended downwards by December of that year to about the two-hundred mark. That trend at two-hundred and a little higher was experienced in two thousand and sixteen. No, it's, sorry, in two thousand and sixteen. And then in two thousand and eighteen, the trend has been maintained at about two-hundred calls a month. In terms of data usage, we've seen an explosion in usage, even while our subscriber base has gone down from a high of eleven-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty in two thousand and eleven to about sixty-five-hundred at this time. Our usage has gone from one gigabyte per month on average to about eleven. So it's a tenfold increase. What it points to is that there's an increased use of video over the internet, and that has led to increased usage on a per-subscriber basis. Where we are in terms of subscribers is we, since two thousand and ten, we have experienced a decline of eight percent in our broadband and cable TV packages. We have experienced a growth of forty-six percent in our broadband-only subscribers. And in terms of our TV-only subscribers, we have lost a large number. But it's come down from about two thousand to about nine-hundred-and-nine. Our telephony subscribers are at eight-hundred-and-seventy. It's a very mild decline, and I'll go into the reason in a little bit. What we are doing right now to improve our business, improve our prospects, include the following. The first is, we have on the table a new set of packages, leading off with internet at enhanced speeds, and into which we propose including local television channels. And by local, I mean the local affiliates of the national broadcasters. We have a new and updated TV guide coming soon to our set-top boxes that are currently spread across the city. We have new languages that we are going to introduce into our basic tier of service. And these include Chinese, Filipino, and Korean channels, which will be provided to subscribers at no additional cost. We have a low-cost phone option coming into play, based on negotiation with our wholesale providers. We have increased internet capacity and speeds and reliability coming into play very shortly, thanks to the router upgrade that was approved by the council two months ago. We have made an early and modest effort in marketing to the Hispanic community, based on the dropping of certain popular channels on the Dish Network platform. And we have seen some modest success. We have more such campaigns to follow. In terms of cost controls, we are doing new service deals with our service providers. We are reducing costs across the board. And while these will take a few months to come to fruition, we are confident that these cost savings will allow us to pass on lower cost to our subscribers and therefore net out a positive margin even on the lower our PUGO. We have several channel upgrades underway for Channel One. I should say under review. We haven't yet commenced doing anything, but we have it under review and in consideration for early implementation. We'd like to show you a brief video on what our new and updated guide is going to look like.
Your on-screen guide is getting a new HD design that seamlessly enhances your favorite features on the set-top box you already have. The new iGuide HD offers the intuitive functionality you love, plus a sleek HD design that improves the discovery experience, simplifies navigation, and automatically tunes to your show's highest resolution. iGuide HD, familiar functionality with a brand-new look.
This new iGuide will be available on eleven thousand of our set-top boxes within the next two-and-a-half months. So by mid-February to end of February, we should have this in place. And eleven thousand would address a large portion of the set-top boxes we have currently available in the marketplace. Going back to the new kind of packages I had mentioned in the improvements we currently have underway, what these would comprise would be one gigabyte per second internet and inclusion of local broadcast TV channels for one low price that we have currently in consideration, and which would be available immediately upon approval in our system service areas that currently have fiber. And this includes about seventeen percent of the systems areas that were approved for fiber rollouts by the council over the past two years. For the rest of the footprint, what we have is up to three hundred megabits per second internet and local broadcast channels, and all included in one low price again. And this would be slightly lower than the price we would look to charge for the one gigabit per second internet and local broadcast channels. And these would be available in all areas that do not currently have fiber. I'd like to emphasize that we have yet to determine the final pricing, but it's likely to be extremely competitive with providers operating in this area. And we have a similar kind of plan in place for business pricing. What we're going to be proposing to offer here is one gigabit symmetric broadband, which is one gigabit upstream, one gigabit downstream to businesses, along with two dedicated phone lines with an elevated level of service, and again at a price that is extremely competitive. These, this again would be available in those areas that currently have fiber. And in the areas without fiber, we would look to provide up to three hundred meg, three hundred megabits, along with two phone lines, and the same at seventy-five and fifty-bit tiers as well. This brings us to the next slide, which is our crossroads. San Bruno Cable has provided competitive service to the market for forty-seven years. We have witnessed an explosion in internet use and a shift of customer preferences to using the internet to access video over the past few years. And this shift is accelerating. We have made a limited investment in installing fiber in select complexes, and we've had some good results. What we need to do at this time is to offer higher internet speeds to capture the interest, attention, and continued patronage of the market. And better data caps, and of course, overall better TV and video package options. So the crossroads we are at can be summed up as, should we proceed with a comprehensive fiber upgrade, taking advantage of the good results we have seen in those areas where we've rolled out fiber and the experience of customer demand for fiber gigabyte internet service. So this brings us to the end of part two. And what we tried to do in this section was to provide information on San Bruno Cable's evolution, on our current subscriber and technical situation. Then what we are doing right now to better serve customers, control our costs, and where we stand at this point. In the next section, we'll tell you about our proposed plan going forward. What is fiber-to-the-home? It's a relatively new technology. It involves transmitting data over fiber lines which extend all the way into the home. It's remarkable because it is, it has a very long life, thirty to fifty years at least. There is no electricity in the fiber lines, and there is no radiation hazard. It's very scalable, so it starts out at one gigabyte internet and can be scaled upwards from that point. The architecture is somewhat similar to the hybrid coax fiber architecture we currently have in place. So our fiber rollout would pretty much mimic what we have in place through a method called overlashing, something that is allowed by the FCC and does not have us trying to seek new permissions or do any kind of new build. This is a slide whose information was provided by AT&amp;T. And they talk about the advantages of fiber optic versus cable internet. Fiber involves the transmission of data over small, flexible strands of glass, the transmit light. It moves faster, or data moves faster over greater distances. The cable internet uses cable TV infrastructure. Basically, you're using something meant for television transmission to transmit data. And the connection is shared with neighbors because of the use of tabs and nodes to distribute the data to individual homes from a central line. Why is fiber more reliable? It's delivered on a dedicated line, and it's more consistent in speed, even during peak times. It is also less likely to go down during a power outage since the points of electrical supply are only at the head-end and inside the subscriber's home. There is no electricity involved, so it has a reduced fire risk. And since it's installed to your home, it's harder to hack, which has become increasingly an important issue for subscribers. And it can even be immersed in water and withstand temperature fluctuations. We believe that fiber will be better than 5G for in-home internet. One, because of performance. If we installed fiber today, we could guarantee a one gigabyte up and downstream standard service. 5G, as per Verizon's press release, can offer three-hundred Mbps as a standard, and at times, one gigabyte. We have no performance variances during peak times, whereas per the Verizon engineer who spoke at this very body a few months ago, it can vary by traffic at the tower. If there's more traffic, the speed goes down. We have no cell towers. 5G would involve up to two-hundred-and-forty cell towers at sixty per carrier per square mile. We have no radiation. They, per reports, appear to have thermal and non-thermal aspects of radiation. We have in-home Wi-Fi as they do as well. We have no restrictions on reception. It's clear right from day one. They have rain fade, line-of-sight restrictions, and signal blockage by foliage. Uptime reliability, fiber's known to have ninety-nine point nine percent, simply because there are less of electrical parts involved in the system. 5G is just not known. And we are local, we are here. In terms of San Bruno Cable, 5G's customer service would be remote. What supports the build-out of fiber? From a consumer point of view, the need for more apps, more internet bandwidth and speeds is absolute. It's there today, it has been for the past few years. And these directly, these aspects directly lead us to considering fiber as the means of delivery for that higher bandwidth and higher speed to the customer. As of today, most American homes have about five devices that are connected through IoT, or the Internet of Things, which provide details of how your refrigerator, as an example, is running to the manufacturer or some appliance manager and so on. Such devices are likely to go up to five-hundred per home by two thousand and twenty-two per published reports. Of course, video itself has invaded, as I, as I went through in previous slides, has invaded the internet, and it's only likely to go up over time. In terms of cities and societies, the need for smart cities and the emergence of demand for smart infrastructures is increasing by the day. And fiber provides a very reliable means of servicing such infrastructure. This would, this could include parking systems, you know, water meter readers, and telemedicine, so on. As per the Fiber Broadband Association, fiber is, has been studied and found to improve property values by three percent, GDP by an overall percentage point or so, and rental values by up to eight percent. And this is across the nation. Where America stands today in terms of fiber and broadband networks is that there are seventy-six publicly-owned cable networks, as of today, across the country. And a hundred and thirty communities in twenty-seven states have one gigabit or higher speeds available on their networks. With that, we come to a case study which, for which there is a video. And this is a city that's pretty similar in size to San Bruno.
The city of Beverly Hills is creating a municipal fiber optic network to serve the residents and businesses of the city. Beverly Hills Fiber is next-generation broadband, capable of providing world-class TV, phone, and internet services with speeds up to one-hundred times faster than what's currently available in the city.
Typically, the theme of municipal broadband is faster, better, less expensive. So the city will be offering gigabit service for around fifty dollars, which by our estimation is about ten times faster than what's available in the city today at a price that can't be touched.
We're a smart city. We're an innovative city. We're a city that wants to lead. And as you look at this incredible technology agenda that the city council put together, starting with fiber to the premise, which sent a very clear, strong message. Beverly Hills is a leader in technology.
I do not know a single municipality that is engineering the intensity of application that we are here. We have something for everyone along the way, from casual internet users to power users. We bring the same capacity to an individual home that the cable companies can only bring to a neighborhood.
We surveyed the community quite extensively on this and asked, who would you like your provider to be? They see the excellence and the reputation of police, and then fire, and schools, and overwhelmingly, they wanted the city to be the provider. Completely reliable, completely fast, never outclassed. Beverly Hills Fiber, connect at the speed of light.
Thank you. As I mentioned, the reason we picked this as an example to compare ourselves with is Beverly Hills is about the same size as San Bruno. And I'll cover the other comparison aspects in a slide to follow shortly. How are we doing in our fiber MDUs? This slide kind of highlights our performance. And as you can see, we are at a sixty-eight percent penetration in the three MDUs where we have installed fiber. And we are generating an extra four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars a year in post-fiber revenue growth through this installed fiber. So it's clearly working for us and working for our customers. The only other point to highlight here is that we are available in seventeen percent of San Bruno homes through the build-out in Peninsula Place, Crystal Springs, and Shelter Creek. What we propose to spend on a fiber build-out across San Bruno is a total of twelve-point-zero-two-nine million. And it involves about ten million of working capital, about one-point-five-six million of contingency. And working capital includes both networks and fiber construction, as well as fixed-set equipment. This is what would involve, or would be involved in terms of expenditure to make San Bruno one-hundred percent fiber. Now, coming back to Beverly Hills. Now, coming back to Beverly Hills and the reason why we are comparing. As you can see, there are sixteen thousand homes in Beverly Hills, we have fifteen thousand six hundred and sixty. They have a hundred miles of fiber planned, we have eighty-five miles. They want to spend thirty-one million dollars to do this because they're starting from zero. We exist as a business, so we can do this for twelve. And they plan, they started in two thousand seventeen, they plan to finish by two thousand twenty-two. We have a twenty-four month plan for rollout. We know that internet traffic, which is already at a high because of video, is going to explode going forward. As of today, Netflix alone constitutes fifteen percent of all traffic on the internet around the world. And we are no stranger to that. We experience it on our system as well. We think that about sixty percent of all the traffic on our internet service right now is comprised of video and it's likely to triple over the next five years. So, what it means is there is going to be increased demand for higher connectivity, higher speeds and something that fiber alone can offer. What fiber would do for San Bruno Cable is that it would future-proof us and the city and our residents, of course, in terms of increased bandwidth, increased reliability, increased internet speeds. And we would start out at being able to offer one gigabit service and of course, higher from that point on. Our enterprise itself would change its nature in that we would become internet-focused and we would use the internet as the provisioning tool for data, video and phone services. With a new look and feel on the TV Guide, our users, of course, would have much easier time navigating their way through the different offerings. And our goal, of course, is to have a BYOD situation come into play, which is ultimately, people would be able to plug in their devices into the internet connection we provide and they would in effect bring their own device to the party. The TV channels that we would like to offer would be tailored to the specific preferences of the citizens of San Bruno through the application of certain tools that we have coming into play in the near future. And this, of course, would be extremely fine-tuned when fiber would be offered because then we would be able to scale up or down the product offering in such a way that it's optimal to the user with internet being the primary vehicle of consumption and everything else following from that. What are the trends we are seeing across the country in terms of cable TV? High rising costs of channels in terms of licensing, simply too many of them, too many TV channels, the cable boxes are old and they're not being replaced by anything that's really new and aligned with the times. The practices are sort of outdated in terms of licensing and piping through to the customers, especially when compared to what's happening in the streaming world. And there's a general inflexibility in the approach to the customer that has to be ended fairly quickly for systems such as San Bruno and at a larger level, the cable industry itself, to be able to survive and to evolve into the future. One of the biggest examples of such inflexibility is in the broadcast retransmission revenues. And I'm talking of the local affiliates of cable, of the national broadcasters such as Fox, CBS, NBC and ABC. Their fees have been climbing steadily in, where in two thousand and six, there were twenty cents per sub, or point two billion dollars in total. Today, they're approaching eight or nine billion dollars of revenue. And of course, it impacts us in a very big way, as it impacts cable systems around the country. And even, and this is in the phase of decline in the overall audience, where just in the past year-plus, they've gone from a twenty-four percent market share to fifteen percent. So, they are hitting us with higher and higher fees even while the audiences are declining and just pointing to the direction that we need to move in, which is away from these broadcast networks and more advanced television options into more of streaming services and more of services that people want to consume over the internet. With that in view, we have available to us a range of streaming TV partners that we are actively considering to include in our lineup, especially in an environment which is all fiber. And these would include some of the following. There are over two hundred such networks available on the internet in America today and some of the bigger ones listed here, which include Philo, YouTube TV, which has generated out of San Bruno, Sling, Hulu, Playstation View, among others. What we have here is a cost comparison. The big point to note in this slide is that this is in a no contract scenario. San Bruno Cable does not require a contract of any of our subscribers for any of our services. Everybody else does. Therefore, they, what they do is they use these contracts and a low-cost package to get people locked in for a period of time with the expectation and hope that going forward, once the contract expires, people will continue paying into their network or their system and therefore help them achieve a decent overall lifetime value for that particular subscriber. We do not expect that. We provide a reasonable service because we are a not-for-profit and our aim is to balance our budget and deal with our financial obligations in the most reasonable way that it does not impact our customers in a negative manner. What we have here is that we have compared AT&amp;T with, with no contract, AT&amp;T internet combined with DirecTV without a contract and of course, our own San Bruno Cable, current pricing without a contract as well as a new proposed pricing without a contract. Of course, it's a TBD on the new pricing in our offering, but we hope to have that packaging somewhere in the, in the seventy-five to hundred dollar range, which combines one gig internet along with local television channels. We, we believe that we come out looking pretty good in a rate card kind of scenario, even at the current time, and we will come out looking really good against even their most competitive package pricing going forward because of the, of the offering, the product and the kind of channel packaging we're going to be proposing to the marketplace. This brings me to the end of part three. In this section, we provided some benefits of fiber-to-the-home technology, some project costs that are proposed and a view into our path forward as a business, as an enterprise and as a product offering to the people of San Bruno. What we look for at the conclusion of this presentation is feedback from the council. And our view with obtaining, or in obtaining this feedback is to develop a business plan, which we could potentially use to move forward on a proposed fiber upgrade and also research and develop the financial options to fund that upgrade if, such is the direction provided by the council. At this time, I would welcome any comments and questions. That brings me to the end of my presentation.
Thank you very much for all the effort and thank you very much for the report. City manager.
So, thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Sandeep. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Sandeep. I didn't say it at the beginning, but Sandeep has only started with, or been with the city of San Bruno for about three and a half months. So, he started with San Bruno three days after I did. I started on Monday, he started on Wednesday, three and a half months ago. So, I just want to thank Sandeep for diving in and developing this thorough, complex presentation with the staff. We wanted, it was a lot of information, it was three parts. We wanted to give you a full complement of information on the system, the history. And we, we've mentioned the summary, really the summary is, the system has its challenges, but they're following national trends, which is people are moving away from TV bundles, typical cable service, and they're increasing in internet service. We do have a monthly deficit. When we put this together and I found out that it was four dollars and twenty-one cent that we're losing per customer per month, I said, Sandeep, let's increase prices by four dollars and twenty-one cent per month. And he said, that's not where the industry is going. We need to take a look at our cost structure and find a way to reduce our costs. And so, it wasn't in the presentation, but I want to thank Sandeep for all of the work that he's done over these few months with going in and renegotiating our current costs. And with the deals that we have on the table, we believe that we will be successful in erasing that, that four dollar and twenty-one cent monthly deficit just by simply renegotiating the costs with the various subscribers and channels that we have. But we are at a crossroads at a system. You know, if we are to continue this enterprise and continue to provide services, we have a decision to make and we're not asking council to make that decision tonight. But the way the industry is going and the market is going is moving away from cable TV and moving to internet and moving to providing high-speed internet and consuming TV through the internet, through video, through streaming video. And so, we provided this very complex presentation to give a lot of information, ask for feedback on next steps. And our proposal for next steps is to go and develop a complete business plan for the enterprise, knowing that with the prior presentation we had, the general fund is not, is not the answer. The general fund does not have the resources to fund this thirteen million dollar expense. And so, you know, we would intend to develop a business plan that would run the enterprise and with the goal of the enterprise at the end of, at the end of the day, funding the cost of, of the fiber upgrade. Now, that may take various forms and fashions, but the goal is for it to be a, a sufficient self-assolvent enterprise. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to council, was there anybody in the audience that wanted to speak on this topic this evening? Mr. Bojus, please. Yes, please.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions on when you're comparing to Beverly Hills and San Bruno, it's apples and oranges, is that correct?
Go and ask your questions and then we'll ask staff.
Yeah. And how do you sustain going forward when you're in the red? And how do you keep going and believe in putting more and more and more into something? If you have a business, you always want to bring more profit. It's all about money. You're at a deli or you have a candy store, you buy this, you sell this and you look at the end of the books, you balance them, you got to be in the green. How many more years could you keep going and sustain it and not have green? Green's profit. And this city, you know, we're in, we're in like a, a time of our life right now with the city, want to build a firehouse, good thing. We've got a lot of other things to cook. Where's the money coming from? And do you include, while we're talking about the cable, are we talking about all the other resources that are going into it also? Gasoline, vans, maintenance, packages, healthcare, is that included? I'm just trying to figure out, how do you keep this going? How do you sustain it? It's going to cost money, everything costs. Grocery store, minimum hundred bucks, little bag of groceries. And I'm just kind of confused because you, you, you want to move forward and you want to grow, but you got to be in the green. How many more years, how, how do you sustain something when it's never in the green? That's just, and I'm speaking for a lot of my friends, you know? We all talk, we all communicate, nobody really comes here, but I'm here, I'm just asking, how do you believe in something? How do you sustain it? How do you get some profit going? And where's the money going to come from?
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wanted to speak? If not, Sandeep, could, would you be available to answer Mr. Bojus's questions?
The first part, if I've understood your question correctly, is how do you, how do you grow profitable, right? Well, we've already addressed part of that in our plan to control costs. We believe that we will at least hit break even in the coming year through these cost controls, if not actually look profitable. The profitability part is going to come into play slightly later when we get a new packaging, a new attractive package and pricing available in the marketplace. Where we've not been aligned so far with the general market and the way the market is moving is in the customer pricing aspect of things. And once we get our cost controls in place, it'll allow us to offer enough packages, enough products that are very competitively priced and will attract customers in larger numbers to San Bruno Cable while retaining a decent margin for the operation itself. And that's where the profitability is going to come from. It's not going to come by just raising rates today. You have to do something that's attractive to the customer. And we believe that we are going to start addressing that through such things as a new Lee Price telephone product, a new fiber internet product in those areas that currently have fiber. And if the council and the city sees fit to move forward with the full fiber rollout, we believe that greater numbers of subscribers coming to those attractively priced, higher speed internet packages will provide that aspect of profitability and allow us to manage our resources more efficiently and in a way that makes perfect economic sense. To answer it to a point.
I think another one of the questions was comparing Beverly Hills to San Bruno, is that not apples and oranges?
Actually, it's not. One of the truths about, about television and internet service throughout the country is the amount of revenue generated per home across the US is approximately the same, regardless of where you live. And this is true of Kansas and California and Beverly Hills and New York and Ohio and elsewhere. Roughly speaking, the number of dollars you generate on a per household basis, given the national level of competition and the national availability of services is roughly the same. So, I don't think we are comparing apples and oranges, it's actually apples to apples.
Well, I think just the final thing was, as far as the costs of sustaining it with the health and welfare, the benefits, are all that inclusive in balancing and, and going forward?
Yes. All these are included within the budget of the cable enterprise and also within the expense portion of the cable enterprise itself. So, these are always part of the equation. And I, in one of the earlier slides in my presentation, I did include the ways in which cable earns and invests money. And this aspect was included there under salaries, general and administrative expenses.
Thank you. Now, to council, questions? There's none?
No.
Well?
Oh.
Well, hold on.
I just, I don't really have a.
Ivory.
Thank you. I really don't have a question per se. Well, I'd like to make a comment first. Thank you for the presentation, you've given us a lot to think about. And when you say it's a crossroads, I think everyone needs to understand that it is literally a crossroads. Either we do this in some fashion, we go fiber to the home and be competitive and get customers back and make enough money to sustain the program, or we get out of the business. There, there doesn't seem to be a, we'll stay in the cable TV business, do what we're doing, upgrade our, our equipment every once in a while. That's, that piece is unsustainable. Not only will we not increase or, and sustain the subscribers that we have, we'll keep losing them because we're not going to be able to offer them the experience that they're looking for and are willing to pay for. So, it's truly a do it or don't do it, here's, here's what we hopefully will get from it or get out of the business kind of thing is how I'm looking at that. And if I'm looking at that incorrectly, please do correct me. I'm interested in a couple of things and maybe you don't have the answers now, so I throw them out there. You talked about the two hundred complaints that you get a month for the cable. Do you have any idea of what types of complaints? And are they always complaints? Because I know my mother calls every once in a while and she has a, not a complaint about the cable, but she, she doesn't know how to do something or something happens and somebody comes out and explains it to her, fixes it. So, is, are you lumping all service calls into the complaint part or is it separate?
The correct description for that is service calls. It's really not a complaint.
Okay.
Per se. Yeah. And these are calls that involve a truck roll, that we have to roll a truck for where a technician goes out and helps people, whether it's really a problem with their equipment or whether they feel it's a problem for their, with their equipment.
Right. Okay. So, so maybe that should be, if you're going to use this slides again and maybe we should link it. link it from the city, it gives a bad impression to say they're complaints, that they're service calls. And also, you've done a great job talking about how you're marketing what we're doing now to subscribers that we have, that you're going to change the guide and do those things. Are you looking at ways to, to attract new customers? I mean, we, we send out things, the utility bills, or we do different things like that, but are you looking at a different marketing strategy?
Yes, definitely. In fact, the biggest push on our part will be to acquire new subscribers going forward, which is why we're proposing a new kind of pricing model to attract those subscribers who primarily want to access San Bruno Cable for the internet and for better and higher speeds of internet access. That is part one. The second part is we also want to be including some aspect of a skinny bundle in that. And this is to attract a new type of subscriber perhaps who already has access to some kind of streaming video package to which they subscribe. It could be Netflix, it could be Hulu, it could be anything. And they use our service as a means of access or a point of access to, to access those services. We certainly aim to continue providing the same level of service and functionality to our current existing subscriber base as long as they want it. And going forward, we do not plan to phase this out anytime soon. Having said that, our emphasis is on getting new subscribers.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other members of the council? Mr. Medina.
Thank you.
Marty.
And thank you. We've been waiting and we have a plan. Or we're going to, looking forward to develop this detailed business plan that'll answer a lot of the questions on how we're going to be able to continue providing the service and cover our costs. That's kind of what your business plan is going to do. It's going to have a marketing plan.
Yes.
Going to have a schedule. That's where I'm, I'm kind of interested in is, is where, what's the schedule for this? How long do you think? I mean, there's a lot of work here, but just curious on, on, on the overall schedule, if we were to say tonight, yes, go for it. So what is the schedule to develop the business plan and get the options? And I know our friend here, Al, has been waiting for many years and he has a plan on the board somewhere in that office. So I am excited about this, getting that business plan. I mean, it's going to show us how it's really going to work, that, that we have to be competitive. We were told earlier by a previous consultant, we either upgrade or we're done. We just can't bleed out with our subscribers leaving. So we have 17% of coverage in fiber, you know? Hopefully, we'll, we'll get a good plan and a good marketing effort and we'll be able to do this. So I'm, I'm really encouraged by it and I wanted to thank everybody involved in this presentation for, for their work. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, Michael, do you have any comments or questions or?
I have a few questions. Thank you. So for starters, thank you. This was, it was a very good report, very comprehensive, addressed a lot of the things that have been kicked around for frankly quite a few years so that you were able to come in in a few months and aggregate all this. It's very impressive, so thank you for that. One question I had was regarding the, the rollout of fiber and $12 million cost to roll it out to every home in San Bruno, yet our penetration is around 50%. National average is around 50%. Probably, we couldn't expect to get much better than around 50%. Could we find segments and not roll out to every home, but find areas, maybe select neighborhoods, regions, something? Or are we not allowed to do that because we're a municipal cable company?
But we would not like to do that. We would like to roll out every home so that we have the possibility of attracting as many subscribers as possible to the system itself. This is from a commercial perspective. But in addition, talking to Al Johnson's plan developed at the pole level for the rollout itself, across the 2,600 poles that we have access to across the city, we have a seven-phase plan, so we could certainly roll out in phases as opposed to doing everything in one go. Because that's how it would happen anyway. Even if the council were to green light the project tomorrow morning, we would not be able to do it without doing it in phases. It would have to happen in phased rollouts. Now, with respect to doing it in certain sec, elements of the city as opposed to others, that would distinctly reduce the advantage of doing a full rollout. Because what it would do is pretty much put us in the zone where we are at right now, which is, we have addressed those three MDUs, multiple dwelling unit complexes, Peninsula Place, Shelter Creek, and Crystal Springs, with a fiber rollout, but have left out most of the city itself. So it kind of reduces our potential penetration. Now, to address your point about whether we're going to grow above the national average, our current performance is at 68% in the MDUs. There is no reason to expect a very substantial discount to that number across the city. Because regardless of what our competitors offer, they, for the most part, do not offer true fiber to the home, which is what we are proposing to do, which is have fiber going right into the home, have the ability to deliver super fast internet speeds at a price point that's difficult to match by competition. And given that kind of a, of a product offering, I don't think there's any reason why we should expect less than a 60 or 65% penetration across the board.
I disagree with that personally because I, I think there are some distinct advantages to these, these areas that we've done. I think that they're, they're unique and they don't, they're not representative of the broader city or the demographic or anything else, but we can debate that at another, at another time. Can you talk a little bit more about the streaming partnerships? I know a lot of these services are available to us over the internet now. How would a partnership work between San Bruno Cable and these companies?
For all our licensing partnerships or our television programming deals, we work through an umbrella organization called the National Cable Television Cooperative, NCTC, and we've worked with them over the years. They have gone and struck deals on behalf of all their member operators with a large number of these streaming players. They have yet to conclude a deal with Sling. They, I believe they're close. And they've yet to do anything with YouTube TV. But they do have deals in place with Fubo, with Philo, and all the others. The net result of these deals is we get what is called an MFN, a Most Favored Nations Clause, working in our benefit, in the sense we get the best possible rate available in the market. And what the rate is, is some kind of a revenue discount to us. So we work to integrate these people in terms of API integrations at our backend and we offer them through our internet offering such that if somebody were to sign up for, let's say, a Fubo TV through us, we would get a revenue share on the amount the subscriber spends with Fubo and we would have access to the billing system that Fubo uses to service that subscriber. So our subscriber would in effect get one bill and the integration would happen at the API level.
So when we start talking about a movement away from television and toward internet-based consumption, even though it's becoming less and less profitable, if, once we start making that move, would a company like Comcast, say, who controls the transmission and the media, have a huge advantage over being able to market what, what they can provide? Meaning that they, they can come in and say, well, if you like television, come to us. San Bruno Cable no longer provides TV, they only do internet. We can give you both. And so as we step out of the market, is there a potential there to lose this segment of the market that's not ready to give up on TV?
Okay. When, I'd like to clarify that aspect off by comments. What, when I say give, move away, it's step down as opposed to step out. It's not to provide the same level of service. Maybe we don't provide 300 channels. Maybe we provide access to a local broadcast affiliates and a few select channels. Beyond that, based on data that we collect from our viewers, we do not see any need to continue providing Discovery Channel number 25 as opposed to the flagship channel. And increasingly, I believe that media companies will start moving in this direction as well. All these years, they've been following a method called forced bundling, where we have to take their not-so-well-performing channels in addition to their flagship channels, simply to be able to get a deal done. But now, when they start disaggregating, disaggregating channels and putting up their own streaming offerings, they're going to have to unbundle and we're going to get the benefit of that. So I don't believe we're going to be in any way greatly disadvantaged by not being a Comcast or not being an AT&amp;T. We have greater flexibility and greater availability of channel offerings, more so than ever before.
Okay. And, and you gave Beverly Hills as an example. Is there really a trend toward more municipal cable system or, or internet systems? And I mean, how fast is that growing?
We believe there is an increasing trend. More and more cities are getting involved, our communities across the U.S. are getting involved in, in charting out their own digital futures, so to speak. Very good set of examples comes from Colorado. We've had Longmont, Colorado Springs, and a variety of other locations within Colorado that have decided to install their own fiber-to-the-home systems. California is a little bit slower on the uptake as compared to some other states, but it's happening across the board. And we have learned that Santa Cruz is interested in looking at doing something on installing fiber to the home. They've had a couple of studies conducted. They may or may not decide to move forward with it. We know San Francisco has had an RFP out for a fiber-to-the-home rollout for a $2 billion project. And similarly, San Jose is said to be looking at doing something on the fiber-to-home system. We are in a great position relative to all these cities because we're already in the business.
Back to the trend on the, not complaints, what are the?
Service.
Service requests. So what happened in that period that led to that dramatic dip in the number of, of calls that we received?
We've had something on the lines of a tap replacement program. This is something that Al Johnson and the rest of the tech team have put in place over the last 24 to 36 months. And what it involves is replacing those taps that are burnt out due to surges in the electrical current provided by BGNB. And as these taps have been replaced, the performance of the homes served by those taps has improved. So the internet performance of the cable serviced by those taps has actually improved and therefore we see a diminution in the number of service calls. The other way of looking at it is, there's been a reduction in the number of subscribers. Fewer subs, fewer complaints is very, I would say, a crude way of looking at it, but that's one approach as well. So I think it's a combination of these two aspects.
Okay. In terms of contention for pole space, a lot of the poles in the city are already pretty full. And as we start rolling out fiber, AT&amp;T is rolling out fiber, we've got the, the cellular companies rolling out their fiber so they can put up antennas. Do you anticipate any issues with us having access to the poles in the city to, to run fiber over where we already have coax?
We have permission to, well, we've already installed our coax on those poles through the city, 2,600 of them. But an FCC ruling from a few months ago actually favors us greatly in our fiber rollout project. And that ruling involves something called overlapping. What it involves is putting our fiber on top of existing coax and we do not have to seek anybody's permission to do that. We already have a mandate from the FCC to be able to roll it out.
Okay. Is that safe?
We believe that eventually we'll be pulling, I mean, it doesn't add very much to the, to the weight factor.
Okay.
On the poles. And Al can speak to that.
Mike?
I'm sorry. The weight factor is going to go way down because we're removing all those big heavy taps you see on every pole, on the power supplies on, on the pole. So overlapping with a small fiber and removing those taps, we are going to be lowering the weight on these poles, which is what everybody would like to see. So even if we had to go get permission, there wouldn't be a problem. We may have to take a little time and do a pole application, but we'd be, would have an engineer go out there and, and they would agree that we would be lowering the weight on the poles, on the span, so we'd be able to build it.
Okay, great. And it's been a criticism of some of the other companies that are coming, so I want to make sure that we're, we're not guilty of, you know, doing the same thing.
Yeah, no. And there's, and most companies would like to get on the poles and they can't because the poles just can't handle it, you know? If they want to be on the poles, they've got to replace it and that's very costly. That's why I don't believe even Comcast would come into the system because they tried to go through our city in a couple of areas and they had to replace poles and they decided to go underground instead of replacing poles because it's so expensive.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's see, I've got a few more questions here. In talking about not having the annual contracts as an advantage, clearly it's, it's a benefit to our, our consumers, but I would think from the business standpoint, having that low barrier to entry and exit could potentially hurt us. I mean, there is a startup cost for us and the, and our revenue stream is more variable if we don't have some sort of commitment. So why wouldn't we consider having contracts when it's sort of, sort of an industry practice to do that?
One, it's been to the, to the advantage of the customer, really, to, for us not to have a contract in place. Because that's part of our brief as a city-owned entity to provide a reasonable level of service at a reasonable cost to our end users who ultimately own the system, in a sense. That's one. The other way of looking at it is you have a contract of sorts when you lease equipment to a customer. They have it sitting in their house, the customer premise equipment. So while it's not a contract, it becomes a, a hold of sorts on the customer because it's not an easy switch out. They actually have to bring the equipment back to the system to get credit and to, to keep their credit in proper shape with the credit bureaus and so on, or pay a hefty fine. So that becomes a contract by default, if you will. The general industry trend, especially in terms of internet-delivered services, is not to have any contract of any sort. You don't see one in place with Netflix. You don't see one in place with several of the other providers. In fact, the majority of them, of the 200 odd streaming services currently available. And customers in general seem not to prefer that. So we are speaking more from a customer-friendliness perspective as opposed to a commercial perspective. From a commercial perspective, yes, it's great to have somebody locked down, but it just gets us into a kind of situation where somebody could do a buyout of the contract. Competing providers tend to have buyout clauses, so they could, AT&amp;T could come in tomorrow and say, switch to us and we'll give you a $200 check. And they've been known to do this in various localities. So we don't think we stand to gain very much by having a contract in place.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm certainly not in favor of doing anything that's anti-consumer, but I was just curious from, if looking at it from the business side, it does seem like it would provide at least a more steady revenue stream. But I, I understand that it's, it's, it comes, it ends up being a benefit and maybe a, a positive on our, on our list, so. One thing that we didn't address in this, and I'm, I'm wondering if you have any thoughts on the existing debt that's carried by the cable enterprise? How that impacts any, any future decisions? And also, any thoughts on the enterprise's contribution to the general fund? Do you envision that changing dramatically as part of a, a go-forward strategy?
Definitely, we, we do plan on paying it back. It's based on rather aggressive projections. We of course have three types of models we're looking at, conservative, moderate, and aggressive. And if we were to do a fiber rollout, I have every confidence that we would be in a position with the right kind of pricing and packaging, to be able to get enough subscribers on board such that our revenue streams would be greatly enhanced and allow us to recoup, recoup on our costs at the backend, which again are being renegotiated and put us in a favorable situation towards paying back or increasing our contribution to begin with and over time paying back the general fund on the amounts we have showing in the negative as of today. We assume that as a debt, that's a given.
Back to, you know, the comparison of, you know, how we compare to other, other cities or how do we, how do we compare to the, to the national trends? Do we have any better information now about our own customer segments? Who, who tends to upgrade from basic internet to faster internet and what percentage of homes that would be? and what percentage of homes that would be?
We have seen a steady trickle of people going to higher tiers of internet service, not at this time. We do not have actually very accurate subscriber information on who's transitioning and why. We certainly need to do more research on that.
Okay. And, oh, last one. I've also heard that there is a trend, especially among younger consumers, to move from stationary consumption to mobile devices, and so, sort of a move away from our traditional type of infrastructure toward, you know, getting their content over cellular. And clearly, the interest in the 5G towers here in San Bruno shows that there must be some interest in our consumer base to move toward that. So, how big of a threat is that to our overall strategy?
In terms of an overall threat, I don't see it as being substantially enhanced by 5G. It's already a threat. We have it on 4G as well. You can stream just as well on 4G as you can on 5G. Where we believe we have an edge, at San Bruno Cable and especially through fiber, is in the in-home internet experience. Mobile devices are very much in vogue, even inside the house now, and so, we believe that we have an edge because that is a, through fiber, that becomes a sustainable stream and a sustainable bandwidth provisioning that can be given to the entire home regardless of the number of devices they have in play in a given household. We believe that 5G, 4G, or any G will have an issue when it comes to too many people being on the network at the same time, just as we have seen on cable internet itself. As the number of users increase, the buffering possibilities also increase on smart TVs and so on. So, we believe that fiber will actually help us solve the problem and actually help us do better than 5G and 4G. But, short answer to your question, 5G will not mean an enhanced level of competition. It just means more of the same.
Right. Yeah, and I did mean specifically 5G, although the part of the 5G plan is, of course, to have high-speed cellular devices in the home that could provide essentially the same thing that we provide over cable today. That's somewhere downstream, but going, this kind of takes me back to my question on the segmentation, because in the example you provided where there's a home, four or five people all competing for the internet, clearly, there is an advantage to having a big pipe coming in and everybody sharing it. But as the demographics shift, if we're not talking about, you know, the nuclear family, we're talking maybe more individuals, we're building more multifamily dwellings, so we have more probably, you know, one or two people per dwelling, different type demographic. That's why I think it's really important that we understand what our customer base, or how our customer base is comprised, how it's made up, and what their particular taste might be for these things, just as part, I mean, just to justify the cost as we move forward, so.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point. But just to address San Bruno specifics from a demographic perspective, we have a population that's 28 percent Asian, 28 percent Hispanic, and identifies as 51 percent Caucasian. We have an age group that's mostly clustered between 18 and 64, and so, not too many young people, not too many, or the bulk are in the prime consumption stage. We have a lesser percentage of people who are under 35 as opposed to people who are over 35 to 55. So, we believe that our fiber offering would sit front and center with most of the population of the city, given where we are at today. And that's another reason why we're moving Chinese, Filipino, and Korean services, to better address the Asian part of the demographic, which we haven't done over the years. And also, we're looking at ways to address the Hispanic market within our footprint. And Hispanics in general tend to over-index for consumption of streaming services through cable. One of the statistics does come out in a few studies, so we plan to take advantage of those situations.
Excellent. Thank you.
Before I move on to the vice mayor, did you want to get some water or anything?
I'm good, thanks.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Could you get him some, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Sandy.
I was just going to comment, number one, Michael, great questions. I think every single time you ask a question, we continue to learn, and I continue to feel more and more confidence in your knowledge of the industry, and I think that that's the thing we've been missing, is really just having that big, big picture, big package. So, number one, thank you for the presentation tonight. Excellent information. I especially appreciate the statistical data as well. So, you know, we are at a crossroads. I think Councilmember O'Connell made this comment earlier, you know, at one point, as a council, we were sitting here wondering whether we were going to have a discussion about either spending the money to invest in our, in fiber, or to sell the cable company, to, you know, take something that we're continuing to lose money on and cut our losses before it gets, we get down the road. But I am more and more confident in your knowledge and the data that you've provided to me, that I'm actually excited to look kind of more toward the future of this. Number one, we have to be profitable, and I was, when I was reviewing the presentation over the weekend, you know, to look that we, over a short period of time, you've actually looked at what it's costing us per subscriber and what our bottom line is. So, I really appreciated that, in that, you know, we know we can increase either, and I appreciate the fact that you indicated, well, not just increase costs, increase the price to the resident, but also trying to decrease our cost and to get that back to the green. You know, when I think back to the San Bruno, I've been a resident all my life here in San Bruno, and back in the days of didn't have cable and had to send my dad up on the roof to adjust the antennas, and living up near the hill, we just had horrible reception. So, San Bruno Cable coming on was an amazing, amazing thing, the best thing ever as a kid. And San Bruno Cable really sustained for many years, and it was a competitive, and it was the cable company that everybody wanted to go to. We wanted to go to it because it was your local business. I want to support local business, and I think that that's important. You can't beat customer service at San Bruno Cable, and I think we don't sell that well enough. I, you know, to pick up a phone and deal with AT&amp;T, and I actually went to DirecTV this past year to get the experience so that I knew what it was like to not just have San Bruno Cable, because that's who I've had for many years. But the experience I had was extremely frustrating, wasting two total days of appointment time to actually have somebody come out and actually do work to install something onsite. They didn't return phone calls. They said they would be there, they weren't there. I never once ever had that experience with San Bruno Cable. And we have something really good here in San Bruno, and we have an opportunity, and I think like you've mentioned with Beverly Hills, they don't have the infrastructure, they don't have the business. We have the business. So, it's a matter of installing something that will sustain, and I'm, and, you know, installing fiber isn't just for the next 10 years or 20 years, it's to sustain. Even though we see the numbers of video streaming continuing to climb, you go into a household today, and like you said, you know, it's your phones, but your TVs, it's your washing machine, your dryer, your oven. I've got, you know, the heating element in my home that is all requiring, you know, the Wi-Fi. That's the direction we're going. So, we've got to be competitive. You know, the other companies like an AT&amp;T, for example, they charge $99 for a service call. Didn't know that until I went over to them. I needed a new remote control, they charged $39. San Bruno Cable isn't charging those. I don't know if anybody gets a service call. If I've got a problem, they're coming out there, and they provide service, and they're out there within the next day. The service has been quick and efficient. So, you know, I'm glad that Michael asked a lot of the technical questions, but I think that what we have here in San Bruno is a really, is a gem. And if we can just continue to go down the path, and I see you sort of waving that, providing that vision for us, there's a lot that we can do, and there's a lot that we can make this a better system. So, I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation, and I'm excited, I continue to learn every time I hear you talk about this industry and what we can do and how we can do this better, that we are, I feel confident in going down that path. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, counsel, tonight, what is being asked is not about whether to approve fiber or even the question of whether San Bruno Cable is not going to exist. That's not what's here before us this evening at all. What is before us is a in-depth report, where we've been, where we are, and a plan, and then what you're asking of us staff is, is the council wanting staff to spend the energy and the time to come back with a business plan to then make a definitive determination on what would be the next steps, as far as the funding, as far as all those things that you have to have a plan. And so, that is truly what is before us tonight. I thank all my colleagues for their questions. I'm not going to add to them because I think in your short time, you've probably been at that podium more than people have been here for years. So, thank you for your diligence. So, what I'm going to ask of the council is, and Marty, because I heard a definitive in my world, that you said, "Yes, bring back a business plan?" So, I'd like to hear from Irene.
Oh, absolutely. I've always supported San Bruno Cable.
Laura?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes, yeah, definitely.
I think without a doubt, we want to see a plan.
Thank you.
And I think the only thing, just for the, those that were here, and then Marty had asked the question, is there, and nobody says that we have to have a definitive answer tonight, but is there some set of a timeline in which to start to see some of that business plan returned to us?
Yes, I will work with the city manager in coming up with the timeline.
Good call.
We'll aim for during the first quarter of 2019, but I'll also say that if you have any additional questions, forward them to me. I'll get them to staff of information you think you need or questions you want answered when we come back to you. But we will certainly pick up from where we are, and as Sandy mentioned, there are a number of models that have already been developed for the business plan, so we will put all those together and develop a hard timeline to get back to you.
Okay, thank you. Again, thank you, Sandy, very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
You're very welcome. Yes, Marty?
So, we have a subcommittee on cable. Are they going to take the lead with?
I think what we need to do is, we've asked staff to come forward with a plan, let them make the plan, and see what they need of us and how they're going to implement it.
Okay, but, all right, that's fine.
I mean, we have already a subcommittee. If they feel that they need that, they will ask.
I'm only asking because that's their role, is to deal with cable. So, I was just making sure that if they were going to get bypassed, that's fine, but if they, but if they were going to take a, because they have meetings, they have additional meetings that the public could be involved in providing comment as well until, but I don't know. I was just asking.
And I don't know, that's why I'm not going to put staff on the spot, because I don't know that answer. But I, they, we do have a subcommittee, and its existence, and if they need them, they have the easy way to reach out. But let them, now that they've got some, they're our direction, let them come back to us and give our faith in the staff to set a plan on how they want to tackle this.